All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. I think. The best way to get started is to probably have Patrick, you know, go back over the information one more time and for councilors that weren't able to attend the last meeting and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Greenhall, Chair of the Board of Assessors, and we are here tonight as a second finance subcommittee meeting, and it's essentially to make a recommendation to the full city council for a tax factor. So I presented a PowerPoint last time. I'm happy to present that again. So I'm just going to go ahead and share the screen. Give me one moment. Okay. Welcome to Tax Classification Fiscal Year 2023. So our role for tonight is to recommend a tax factor, which we would then present to the city council, the residential factors that the tax burden, that is to be borne by each class of property. Valuations for fiscal 2023 are based on the physical status of June 30th, 2022, with the full and fair cash value as of January 1st of 2022. And our residential market, we're generally looking at market sales predominantly from calendar 21. And the income approach is used for the commercial and industrial properties. This is our tax base. Our values for the last few years. So you see fiscal 21, it was $9.4 billion. Our total value in fiscal 22 was 9.9. And in fiscal 23, it's 11.2%. You'll see most of the appreciation the last couple of years has been predominantly in the residential class and the commercial, industrial, personal property. While there's some appreciation, it is a little more limited. We are moving away from our levy ceiling, which is a great thing. That's good news. That means, you know, overall values have increased. So here's the chart, chart showing the last few years of the levy ceiling where we were sort of stopped at that hard cap of the levy ceiling.
Can you just explain how we're getting over the levy ceiling for those who may not, who may be confused?
Sure. So the levy ceiling is an absolute cap of how much money the, the city can raise, barring a couple of, of sort of exceptions to that. But it is your total value, it's two and a half percent of your total value. So with the housing, when, when the market kind of crashed a few years ago, the levy ceiling came down and crashed into our levy. So it sort of forced us into a lower levy. In the last couple of years, we have seen some, a lot of growth, particularly in the residential market. Therefore, we're, we're getting some, some distance between the levy and the levy ceiling.
So the new growth is what allows us to raise the levy ceiling?
Levy ceiling, well, growth can be part of that, but also your, your levy is your total value. Your, your levy ceiling. So if all of your values rise unrelated to growth as well, then your, your levy ceiling rises.
Okay, so it's just based on two and a half percent of total growth?
Total value.
Total value, I mean, is how we get our. And I just wanted to welcome Freddie, I will Freda Lopez, who joined us ready, and Counselor Fenton. Thanks for joining.
This chart is interesting. It, it shows the increase in value. So this is looking at calendar 21 sales, which is the blue part of the graph, and then the 2019 value in the red graph. And it's just showing, you, you'll see it's, it's quite a shift in the average sort of sale prices and the, and the sale amount. And this is why we are seeing such increased values for fiscal 23.
So just to be clear, we're going based on 2021 values.
Correct. It's kind of a history of the 10-year average single-family values and taxes.
And I want counselors to feel free to ask questions as they arise, because sometimes I have to ask questions based on whether we're looking at right in front of us at that time. So we don't have to wait to the end of the presentation to get the questions answered.
But here's just the residential tax factor. This sets the tax burden again to be borne by each class of property, which would be the residential and a commercial, industrial and personal property. This factor does determine the tax rate. The city of Springfield, we do shift the tax burden from the residential class to a commercial, industrial, and personal property class. One of the options, I'm not advocating for it, but one of the options would be a single tax rate for fiscal 23. And just as a point of reference, it would result in a $21.52 for both the residential and the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate. The maximum shift that we can go to in the city of Springfield is up to 1.75, and that becomes, oops, my apologies, that becomes a little clearer as we move on. Here is a, a chart really just showing what the shift is. And in fiscal 22, you'll see on the left, this is the percent of the full and fair cash value of the CIP class. And you'll see in the chart, it was a total of 24%. That means residential makes up 76, 76% of the overall value. But the shift again allows us to move some of that burden from residential to commercial. And in fiscal 22, the result is, you know, that CIP, the commercial, industrial, and personal property, they paid 40% of the levy. Where residential, they paid 60% of the levy. Here's a graph showing the shift over the last few years from fiscal 12. Last year, we were at a 1.644. Or fiscal 22 comparison of surrounding community. Springfield's in at a 1.64. Chicopee was at a, went to their map shift. And fiscal 23, there's certainly recognition that the values are, are very high for the residential market. So in order to offset some of the tax increases from the value, there was a previous commitment of three and a half million dollars to reduce the fiscal 23 levy. Looking at, at the sort of the tax rate, if we assumed some same information from fiscal 22, for example, if we stayed at the same residential rates for fiscal 23 levy, it would be a $575 increase for the average single-family bill. If we stayed at the same shift, that 1.644, it would have resulted in a $360 average increase to the single-family taxpayer. But the mayor has recommended an additional $6.5 million of free cash to further the levy. Thus, we are, his recommendation today, we would be looking at $194 increase.
Is it free cash or was it from the settlement source?
Well, it, it's, it will ultimately be free cash, but really the money, the idea of the money was from the ever-source payment from back taxes, which is why we have the additional free cash for one of the reasons. So again, the mayor's recommendation to further reduce the levy by utilizing $6.5 million from the ever-source payment of outstanding back taxes, there would be a slight increase in the shift, which would result in an average single family tax bill increase of $194. The recommended tax factor is a .7926. And the two corresponding rates, the residential rate would be 1705, which would be a $1.77 reduction from fiscal 22. And the CIP rate would be $36.40, and that represents a $2.64 reduction from fiscal 22. Just always want to remind people of some personal exemptions. One of them is 41(c), and this was recently updated by both the mayor and the city council. And it lowered the, the, the changes for this year, lowered the qualification age from 70 to 65. It adopted a cost of, we adopted a cost of living adjustment that will be implemented going forward, starting in fiscal 23. And most importantly, we increased the tax exemption amount from 500 to 1,000. We are going to be seeking home rule petition to basically expand the qualifications of this program that would apply to anyone who's under 65. We also have abatements for veterans with a disability rating of 10% or more. We have one for people who are over 70 with asset restrictions, or if they're a widow or widower, or a minor. There's also a, an exemption for someone who is blind with a certificate of blindness from the Massachusetts Commission. City of Springfield tax levy history and stocks and figures. So I have not filled in the, the 23 information yet. Last year's average single family value was 185,100. This year, the average value is 215,700.
Counsel Fenton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Patrick, the last slide, you said the home rule petition would apply to anybody under age 65?
That's what we're looking into, yes. So it would be the same qualification standard, same income and asset restrictions, but for someone who's under the age of 65.
So it would no longer be an elderly exemption, which is what it's called. It would be just an exemption based on income?
Yes, we would still keep the two separate, because there's, one would be statutory base, which is the 41(c), and then a separate one would be funded basically by, by MGM sort of reserve money.
And would that apply to only natural human owners or also to trusts and LLCs?
Trust, it depends on sort of the beneficiary information, and an LLC would not be included.
Do you have that language drafted, the home rule petition?
We did have a draft. And I'm happy to send that along to you.
Are we, is there intention to do that this year before the end of the calendar year?
I think the intention would be more in a January, submit, submitted in January.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Fenton. Freddie, I think I've seen you next, and then Counsel Davila.
Thank you, Tracy. I just had a question. When you, so it sounds like you guys put a lot of thought into this year's analysis. And I guess my question is for the mayor's recommendation. Is his process something that, let's say, this team gets together, puts the data, do you guys have a recommendation that you guys suggest to the mayor first, or is that something that he's briefed and then he decides? The reason I'm asking is because, you know, I, I think it's great that we received that payment for EverSource to give everybody some relief. And, and I just think that this is, I think either my fifth or my sixth year on the tax committee and I, and overall, you know, I think as well as like Tracy and a few other people, we want to see some relief for everyone across the board. And sometimes the, the taxes aren't directly used as, let's say, whatever million it is that we have, and then we, we receive, let's say, another several million that doesn't get applied directly to the levy and, and what we need to do to give relief to the people. And, and I, so I applaud that. I, I feel like this is the first year that there's some direct impact money that's going to give some relief. But I think that, I think overall, I think it's, um, is just something that is just repeated every year, and it's starting to be there. So it's a breakthrough year, I think. But as far as the set in the actual rate, you know, it just sounds like it was well thought out this year, so.
Freddie, I can take this, TJ, this is TJ. I can answer the question kind of on process. The Board of Assessors from June, we set the budget to November timeframe. They're looking at the values and they come up with the values. They get those approved by DOR. And then we sit down with the mayor and kind of give them a first showing, if you will, of the tables that represent options for the taxpayers. And this, in this case, you know, we sat down a few weeks ago and the number was 565 on the average increase was going to be 565 if you stayed at the same rate. And we all kind of looked around the room and said, there's no way in a year like this, we can increase the average by 565. And so we started kind of running through scenarios and then settled that, you know, in addition to what the personal exemptions are and the changes we made last year, we were going to do the home rule petition for the legislature to do beyond the exemptions that, that are there. And we're also going to, you know, increase the amount in a meaningful way, but a financially responsible way to 10 million total. And that kind of, and you'll see it bought us to get, go from an average increase from 565 down to an average increase of 194. Now, that's not to say there aren't bills that are still going to be going up, but there are some bills that will be going down. And my job is to advise the mayor and, and have the Board of Assessors help advise the mayor as to what, what makes sense, both long-term fiscal stability and planning that could be, you know, compassionate to our taxpayers, but also recognize that we got a plan for a potential recession. And I think this is the perfect blend of that.
Thank you. Counsel Davila, if, if you don't mind for a minute, I have a couple of things that I, that I wanted to jump in and say, because now everybody's raising their hands. So one thing that caught my attention was that MGM funds are going to be used if the home rule petition is is accepted or approved. And I'm not sure how that came about, because we always spoke about us working together to figure out how the MGM money would be spent, but it seems to me that that conversation is already taking place. So.
Yeah, I know, Counsel. That's a great question. What we were trying to attempt with the home rule legislation, when we talked to DOR, was link it to a guaranteed revenue source that for, to, to create that. And it's not, and in the, in the beginning, it's a short amount of money based upon the qualification. And I'll let Patrick get into that. You know, this is no intention on usurping the council's ability to help us figure out where that money's going. Having said that, there's also a legislative change. We can't spend that money until Chapter 44, Section 53 is amended by the Commonwealth to allow money to stay in a special revenue fund. And that's what we're hoping to pass in the upcoming legislative session supplemental budget that's out there. So this was just a way to demonstrate to DOR that we have a way to pay for it, and that's ongoing.
Yep. And I, I do applaud the 10 million. Although I asked for it last year, I applaud it this year's effort. However, I just want to know what the certified free cash amount is.
Not certified yet, so I don't, Pat, right, you have your.
What is the estimated free cash amount?
Our estimate is $67 million at this.
So $67 million, we could, in essence, drop these increased bills down to zero with $67 million. We could put more than 10 million towards reducing the tax burden, because I don't care if it's a dollar. I don't care if it's a dollar. We're going to get the phone calls regarding the tax bill increases. And maybe some counselors get calls more than others, but I know that I'm going to get them. And so while I applaud the 10 million, I think we could have done 20 this year. We got $67 million of free cash that's coming up. So I just wanted to make that point. And then I'm just going to let Counsel Davila speak his piece. And then Counsel Allen, followed by Counsel Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the great minds think alike. That's exactly what I was going to ask. It gives me real pressure to hear that we have approximately $67 million in free cash. But Patrick, has, or TJ, has that already been certified? Or are we waiting for that certification?
We're still waiting for DOR for final certification.
So it could potentially be more?
No, well, I don't know. I'll defer to, to Patrick Burns.
Just, I received their last question on Wednesday, and I just see their last question about 20 minutes ago that I need to answer. And it's a question on a receivable of $6,000 that I need to just find at this point. So the figure that we have is 67. You know, I don't see that amount certainly changing at this point. We just have to straighten out this one last question.
Now, I believe that's the certifiable amount as of June 30th, 2022, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so as of June 30th, 2022, we have $67 million. I want to, I just want to make sure that's correct.
Yes, that is correct. Hopefully I have it certified by tonight or tomorrow.
I, I understand. I understand. Well, I'm going, I'm not going to monopolize the time, but I do join Counsel Whitfield. Look, guys, I, I know it's always a, a fine dance that we have to do. I think we all have the same goal of easing our residents' financial pain while also maintaining healthy, robust budget and maintaining fiscal stability. And I also think that you know, with $67 million of free cash, the council needs more time to consider how to handle that. I do believe that we could make a commitment, joining Counselor Whitfield's thoughts of adding another $10 million, which in essence could potentially bring down, or will would bring down the, the tax to almost zero. You know, I don't look at this, this as an expense. I look at this as an investment. I look at this as a boost to the economy here locally. So those are my thoughts. I look forward to the formal presentation. And Patrick, I apologize that I couldn't get to you today, but I will give you a call offline tomorrow. But just, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Patrick and TJ.
And I just wanted to clarify that this is the second finance subcommittee we have in on this subject. So the next subcommittee meeting, we're, well, the next special meeting, we're supposed to vote on it. But we don't have to. We have another day that we could come back to the table and discuss the options. We have another date, but the hope is to get the tax factor approved by the council and then approved by DOR. Patrick, is that correct?
That's right. Just a point of clarification. This is the last subcommittee meeting is, is for tonight. Then what's happening on Wednesday would be a public hearing first, and then the classification vote.
So we got to get people to sign up for the public hearing, so folks can know what's going on, and they can express how it will impact them. And then for Wednesday, and then we're, the, we are setting the tax factor on Wednesday, but if we don't come to an agreement on Wednesday, we have till Thursday?
Right. We have a, a second meeting scheduled already on Thursday.
Okay. And when does it have to be certified? Well, what's the date that DOR would like to certify it by?
Well, we need it certified by Department of Revenue by December 6. So we need to get a vote of city council of a tax factor, get all of that information to the Department of Revenue, and all that needs to happen before the 6th.
Before the 6th, okay. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of the timeframe that we're on. Counsel Allen? You're muted, Counselor.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Okay, I've got a few questions. I do a couple of them anyway. TJ or Pat, are there any other previous commitments for this use of free cash? In other words, one of the commitments is the six and a half million to go to tax relief. There any other previous commitments, things that we were going to use free cash for?
We have assigned 10% for open liability, which is, gosh. 6.7 million, 67. So we're going to put 6.7 million would be, would need to go into this OPEB trust. And then that's really generally the only ones that we have fully committed to would be the 6.7 and then the 6.5.
Okay. All right, thanks. And when, when you're have, so the argument for tax reduction is clear to give tax relief to, to taxpayers and in town. What's the argument for the other side? For not, you know, we're still doing tax reduction to the 6.5, but what, what are the pressures you feel as a finance team for other uses of that money?
I mean, right now, the biggest things that we want to look at is our pension system, which is underfunded. We've made great progress, but I'd like to see us make more progress. We have our OPEB liability, which is over a billion dollars. We have a lot of future things. We have to, we're gearing up towards a potential recession where I think we're in pretty good fiscal health to weather the recession. Well, it's not like the last time when the recession where the ceiling crashed down on us, and we didn't have the resources to, to keep people working. We have, we have healthy reserves now, and I would like to grow them even further to make sure if it's a four or five-year recession, we're not doing what we had to do in 2008, 2012. I caution the council about adding more than 10 million to overall tax relief. But for the fact of that, when the money is no longer available, there will be a balloon payment at, at the, at some point in time where if you keep them down now, the next year they hit with a thousand, $2,000 increase. That can be catastrophic for folks as well. So we try as a team to come up with a, the right balance that's going to keep help the taxpayers, help the businesses, keep our bond rating the highest it's ever been, and keep Wall Street, you know, keep an eye on how we're doing, keep DOR happy. It's kind of an all, like a delicate balance, that balancing act that we try to do.
Okay, yeah. So basically, it's, oh, it's the reserves, it's OPEB and pension, those three things. And but just the, when you were, when you picked this recommendation that came out today, what was the special thing about this recommendation? Because I'm sure you probably were looking at other numbers as well. What was, what, you know, got it to the point where this is what we're going to recommend?
Our goal was to reduce both, reduce both rates, CIP and residential, and try to get the tax bills down from 575 to below 200.
Below. So, so you were trying, you were trying to get the average residential tax increase to be below 200?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm okay for now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Counsel Hurst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. TJ, a couple of questions. I, I understand your balloon payment and, and sort of your thought process around that. And so I guess to that end, have you thought about projecting like the next three years out? Certainly next year, values are set to remain high, because it sounds like you base them off of the previous year. But it would seem to me that values are ultimately going to start trending downward. And so has the mayor and you thought about projecting what it is that you're going to commit this year and that year? Because you're right, if you're committing 10 million this year, then we need to, the likelihood is high, we're going to be, need to be prepared to commit 10 million next year, if not more.
So we've had those conversations, and I don't know if the chairman wants to elaborate a little bit more about, because we, we do look at future fiscal years, or Matt and Justin go on a comment. We have had those conversations about how to kind of make sure that we're sensitive to when values start going down and and the values of, I guess values start going down, but they're still high. So next year might be a good example. We have gotten there for a recommendation for multiple years, but we line this up against our multi-year financial plan every year and make sure that we're kind of making strategic decisions.
Just, I'll speak to the values. So because we are shifting some of the burden from residential to commercial, what was really complicated this, the last couple of years, is the residential market has appreciated so much more than the commercial market, and it's really putting a lot of pressure on the shift. So there is a slight move, increasing the shift this year, that's going to leave us a little bit of wiggle room for next year as well. So we're going to try to mitigate some of the possible increase that way. If the residential market does flatten out, and the commercial and industrial and personal property still even appreciates a little, that will also help with the, with the shift. So there's a couple of tools left. One is the shift that we could certainly look at a little more next year as well.
Okay, so I agree with Counselor Whitfield as well as Counselor Davila. I mean, the bottom line is residents need more help this year, probably more than they've needed assistance in the past. And so to the extent that we could do that and sort of project out long term, and making sure that we also have monies set for next year, that seems to make sense to me. I think we also need to think about cutting the budget. I mean, have we, have we thought about that as we sort of plan for this year's budget, ways in which we can reduce spending?
Yes, so that's what we try to do, Lindsay and I try to do every year, is limit growth and control growth. You know, we don't tend to want to cut services unless we have to, but we limit the growth.
Why is everything around cutting services, TJ? Why do we have to, like, every time we think about shrinking the budget, why do we always go to cutting services? Why do we, I mean, if folks are frustrated with the services they're receiving now, but I guess why do we always have to go to cutting services? Is there no other way to cut the budget?
No, not really, because of the non-discretionary nature of virtually all the budget between net school spending in the school department, pension, debt, health insurance, all of that happens, and then you're left with two hundred and fifty million discretionary budget for an eight hundred million dollar budget. So it's very challenging to, and to cut it in a meaningful way, it's very challenging for us to do that. Now, we eliminate vacancies, we eliminate probably a million and a half worth of vacant positions. That's a way to do it without cutting services. We've asked the departments to do more with less, so, you know, we've really tried to make, kind of hold down the expense side, so we don't have to deal with the whole revenue side. But, you know, that's the balancing act, is, you know, taxpayers don't want to have to have the taxes go up. We also want to make sure we have services for the residents and the businesses, and that's kind of where the balance comes in.
Got it. What, why can't we use the MGM money now? Again, can we, I mean, is it, is there a reason why we can't use it now?
Yes, Master of Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three says, "All money belongs to the general fund unless it's put into a designated fund that is approved by DOR." We do not have a designated fund, so if any, if we wanted to use the money, it would have to float a free cash and not be used for the purposes set out in HCA.
Okay.
But that law can change, that law can change in the next few days.
I understand that. I'm sorry. You said the law can change in the next few days?
The governor filed the technical fix as an outside section to a supplemental budget that's going to get moving on Beacon Hill to close out the fiscal year. And so we believe and hope that it'll pass and be signed into law before the calendar year ends.
Which would allow us the ability to use those funds
Correct.
to offset the tax burden on residents sooner, right? And potentially even more than the ten million that we're using now? I mean, it certainly would be, it certainly would be another source that we could.
It's another source of revenue, that, another source of revenue that we would have access to, correct?
So we, so we wouldn't, if we wanted to increase the ten million dollar offset to the levy, if it's approved in the next couple of days, we could do that, right? There's no reason why we couldn't.
The mayor has to make a recommendation and file the order with the council.
Got it.
I have not had that conversation yet.
But it's possible. And how much money are we talking about that's in the MGM fund?
Millions in the account as you speak.
What was that number again? You said that again?
Five point four million.
Got it. And just my last question, Madam Chair. Sorry to monopolize the meeting. My last question is, when we say on average, you said the tax bills are going to go down, how much?
Well, we went from an average increase of five sixty-five down to one ninety-four.
I'm sorry, go on.
The properties, I'll defer to Mr. Fontaine to answer, or the chairman to answer on behalf of the board assessors. Yes, Counselor Hurst, could you repeat your question, please?
Yes, on average, how much are the tax bills going to increase? You said before it was going to be around five hundred, and now it's going to be around two hundred?
Hundred ninety-four, at what the mayor recommended today.
Okay, a hundred and ninety-four. Now, does that, is that every property?
That's the average.
That's, that's the average. So there still could feasibly be residents that receive a tax bill around five hundred dollars. Like, I mean, and I'm sorry, there are still some residents that could see an increase in five hundred, in their tax bills of five hundred dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so I guess that brings me back to a frustration of mine that I've raised on a number of occasions. And, and that is that there are a number of individuals who may receive that five hundred dollar increase who are on fixed incomes or just at this point in time simply cannot afford that. And they also might not necessarily fit into the criteria where they can receive an exemption at the state level. And they're going to be forced to pay that amount, and it's going to be a lot. I mean, at this point, I mean, five hundred dollars is a lot for anyone. And so I guess, have we come up with a mechanism to ensure that those individuals, especially those who are on fixed incomes, are not going to be those individuals receiving those five hundred dollar tax increases?
So, Counselor, the answer is, we looked into it, and I can have the chairman elaborate a little bit more, kind of the challenges or the legalities of us trying to do a program like that. The home role position was the closest we could get to that, and I'll let Patrick talk about that. And also, we're going to be committing to do two million to do rents, mortgage, and utility assistance, because we cannot put money in to pay for people's taxes, but we could give money to help out in other ways. And so that's kind of the whole package we were thinking about as we went into the FY twenty-three budget, and now with FY twenty-three setting up the tax rate. That's kind of been our approach, is trying to find the best balance to get the money to, exactly like you said, those that are still feeling the pain and the burn, there's nothing, they don't have a program that they follow.
Sure. I'll also just add, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I was just.
I was going to say, how do we know who those individuals are? Sorry. How do we figure out who those individuals that may get a two hundred dollar increase versus those individuals that may get a five hundred dollar increase, and then I'm done. I won't ask any follow-ups. Sorry, Counselor.
That is, who gets an increase is purely based on their assessed value. And that is, that is based on full and fair cash value, and we're looking at market sales to determine what each individual house is worth. So if that style house, if the market sales have been very strong, if the five comparable sales are strong, and that house value goes up, then they are going to see an increase in tax.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. I do see a few more hands up. I'm going to defer to Diana because she has not spoken yet, and she is on the committee. So Diana, I just wanted to make a couple of points. During the budget season is the time that we should be really scrutinizing the increase in the budget, because that is how they set the tax, the property tax that we have to bring in. So right now, we've got to meet it one way or the other. The concern that I have is, we got forty million dollar settlement from Eversource. And if you spread that out over three years to give tax relief, that's like thirteen point three 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 million a year that you can give tax relief over to three years to our residents. So my concern is like, okay, we think about our free cash, but we give six point five million to the Linds and Pignellis and stuff. We, the mayor, may or may not consider giving more of a decrease to the residents in the city of Springfield. Doesn't seem right or just to me. We need to consider who is paying his salary most of the time. You know, the legal salary most of the time in the city of Springfield. And then consider the struggles that the residents are going, going through. And so when we say you don't advise of this and that, over three years, you can average out the forty million, and you still have an additional twenty-seven million dollars of free cash to still put six point seven million in OPEB. And then you still have more money left to do other things with, to put in the reserves and the other things that we have to do as a city. So I just want, you know, you guys to really like consider and think through how it affects the residents, because when we think about my family that lives in the sixteen acres who have had great sales and the value is going to increase, if they get an increase of five hundred dollars to their property tax bill, and they're certainly on a fixed income that is not going to grow at the rate of inflation, it's not fair. So we still got to do better. I applaud the ten million, the additional six point five million, but when you're sitting on, I'm going to just say the forty million of a lawsuit that counselors help bring in, we could do better. We could still do better. We could average that out over three years. And I'm going to defer to Diana, because we do have another meeting at five forty-five.
Thank you. Diana from the Springfield Regional Chamber, for those I haven't met yet, thanks for having me here. Obviously, here to speak on behalf of businesses who are, you know, also dealing with the effects of the economy, and certainly will deal with the effects of a recession, if that's what happens next year. So I just want to go on record as saying that. But I just wanted a little bit of clarification. Patrick, you said this shift gives wiggle room for next year. Do you mean wiggle room for keeping the shift? So in other words, if it shifts more to the commercial side, as is recommended this year, did you mean wiggle room to not further shift to the commercial side next year?
So that question is a little complicated, because it really depends on the overall value and the value increases that residential versus commercial industrial will experience. So if the commercial, industrial, and personal property appreciate more than the residential market, then the shift essentially could, could become a little lower. If the appreciation continues at the same sort of rate of residential far exceeding commercial, then, right, then the room between where we are now and the max shift may lower a little, a little bit as well. So it's a kind of a complicated question right now, but this is halfway point in between where we are now and then the max shift.
I just want to point out, you know, the new growth number was mostly in commercial, commercial development, and so that, that always has to be a priority, I think, the city, and making sure that we're remaining attractive to commercial development, because that is a big part of where that new growth comes from.
And we also have to get back to the screen that shows the different tax factors, because even though the mayor recommended one, doesn't mean that that's the one we have to vote on. We can also recommend our own tax factors to approve, so we don't have to go with what was recommended, although we can. But I think that we need to see the rest of the presentation. But prior to that, I'm going to let Counselor Perez have the floor, because she hasn't said anything. And then I want to go back to the, I'm sorry, Freddie and Victor, but we don't got a lot of time. So I want to go back to the screen, so we can actually look at the tax factors.
Counselor Perez? Yeah, my question was from the standpoint of view of the finance committee, what will be the recommendation for tonight's meeting? What are, you know, just for, at this point? Based on the other two meetings, I know their recommendation is ten million dollars, so what are we seeing? So we will be clarified, including myself for tonight. We are going to look.
Segue into the screen, Patrick, so she can see it, so she can see what you guys are recommending.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor.
My apologies, I have to make this more screen friendly. So I don't know if anyone can see that, or if that's.
That's good.
Okay.
You can see it, yeah.
So from basically the, the left column here is the residential factor, and this would be the residential rate and the commercial rate. And this bottom, this one all the way on the right, would be the average single-family value tax increase.
So does that answer your question, Counselor Perez? They are recommending a tax factor of zero point seven nine two six, which would drop the residential property tax rate per thousand dollars to seventeen oh five, which is a reduction of a dollar seventy-seven from last year. And it will also reduce the commercial side by two dollars and sixty-four cents and put them thirty-six point forty per thousand. But the average tax bill for the residents will increase a hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Can you scroll down, Patrick? What's below mayor's recommendation?
Yeah.
So I included everything that brings us down to the map shift.
So a hundred and fourteen dollars. So even with the Mac shift, the commercial, so here's the thing, how I feel. The commercial value didn't increase that much. So even if we reduce their, by reducing their property tax number, they're still going to be paying close to the same or maybe less, because the commercial property value didn't increase a lot. On the residential side, it went bazonkers. It went nuts. It went through the roof. And so their bill, our bill, there, I'm part of it, our bill is going to still increase by a hundred and fourteen dollars, even if we do the one point seven five is max shift. The commercial side, regardless of where we fall on this chart, is going to see sort of a reduction, because they only, their values only increased by like, what, four hundred, five hundred, nine hundred thousand, maybe somewhere around there, nine hundred thousand. On the residential side, it was what? How many millions, Patrick, did we increase?
The value increase?
Yes, the value increase for the residential side from FY twenty-two.
It's about one point one billion.
One point one billion. And how much did the commercial side increase?
About, let's, hold on one second. About two. Hold on, I'm sorry. Hold on, I'm sorry. That's two point four billion.
Point four billion, okay.
Yeah, I'm just doing quick math. Hold on one second.
Uh, the CIP value last year was two point four. This year, it's almost two point six. So we're looking at about two hundred million of value increases on the commercial property. Billion on the residential.
Versus one point billion. So two hundred million versus one point one billion is a huge difference, right? Is a huge difference. And while I definitely, you know, in my other role, I work for small businesses. I help them grow. I do all these things for small businesses, but they still get some of the benefits of the city like police, fire. Things like that. Um, they do get benefits of the city as well as whoever patrons their, um, restaurants. Or whatever the business is, they're getting a benefit from city residents that way as well. And so I, while I do want to strike a balance, we got to keep in mind that. One point one billion dollar increase compared to a two hundred million increase is huge. It is huge. And, um, you know. I, I want to make sure that there is a balance. They're getting a decrease in what they paid last year either way, either way. So, um, I'm talking about as far as the, the dollar amount here. If you pull the screen back up, because I just want everybody to be on the same page. Um, there's gonna be a decrease in the commercial property, um, rate either way. So we just got to be careful that when we look at this tax factor, we're giving. The residents the biggest benefit that we can. If the mayor is not going to, um. Do what I consider the right thing and give more of a, um, reduction. Via free cash or whatever type of other cash we have available to do so. Then we as a council need to do the right thing. Um, Freddie.
Did you say Freddie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, um, I don't know, um, the, the lady from the, uh, chamber's name. But she makes a great point as far as the businesses. Yes, um. The thing is, I get to see all aspects of it because I do the residential real estate plus work with some commercial real estate. I think that. Ultimately, um, I just wanna, I, all of you guys, I just sit on this committee. I'm not a city counselor. I'm not, you know, I don't work for the assessors officer or for the mayor's office. And I just want to commend all of you guys. I just think that from the outside looking in. This meeting has a lot of, um, other conversations that tie to it. And I think there's like a meeting missed and I don't know what the committee is and we challenged ourselves with that on the committee for SICS. Um, and, you know, I think that it, it all ties into, you know, you talk about a reserve. But when you're mentioning a reserve as something really light, you know, we have a reserve with the school, et cetera. I'm not trying to compare, but it's the only thing I can compare it to. And having a reserve is a separate conversation. How does this reserve work? Are we invested? Does it pay us back if we put it into twelve month CDs? There's just like all these conversations that are included in the tax committee. And I just want to go back to just the taxes for a moment and say. That although I don't understand the numbers, what would make sense to me is keeping it the same. But making sure, um, that all of the money that is paid for taxes actually goes into the taxes. Because as property values have increased, these are the same homeowners for the most part who stuck with. Um, when we were, our property values weren't what they really were, which was like, you know, at, at a hundred thousand or whatever it is. They stuck through it. Now they're seeing some values and, and, you know, just being held accountable. That the taxes actually go into save some money from the po- for the pockets of the people actually stuck through Springfield. As it starts thriving even more and more. Um, I think that, you know, I think that's just a big piece. So my, my piece would be to kind of keep it the same. Um, but I'm also not an expert at that. So. You know, just from that.
The same. Tell me, tell me what keep it the same means.
The same tax factor that we had last year.
So that means, okay, what's the same tax factor as last year? One point six four four?
Yeah, that's the.
Can you pull that back up?
Yeah, sorry about that.
I just think there's such a whole general conversation that if, if everybody's working and, and property values are going up. Businesses are starting to thrive, you know, that kind of shows that things are working and then they get kind of a discount this year because of the money. I know there's a bigger conversation where everybody wants more. I'm just, you know, focusing on the rate.
So if we keep the tax, um, shift, the CPI shift the same. Then that means the residential bill will increase by two hundred and sixty-one dollars on average. That's just on average. And.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that doesn't work.
Yeah.
That doesn't work. That doesn't work.
Fully populations that's owned their homes for thirty plus years.
No, no, that doesn't work.
In their prime and they were working. Do, do you know how much, um, they make on social security compared to what they were made when they were working? It's way less. So.
Yeah, no, the map, I don't, I didn't have, so I didn't have this in front of me when he pulled it up. I thought it was a different number as far as. So personally, then, you know, um, I'll leave it to you guys. I just, I think.
No, you're, we got you on this tax rate setting committee for a reason because you bring value. So we definitely want to.
I just think the proposal that the mayor put forward, um, was, was well thought out. Only because I just feel there's so many other conversations that, that go into this, you know what I mean? Like where does this money go and does it go to the general fund? I do have a separate question where he's, where you said, um, the taxes were not allocated properly for us to be able to move that money. To MGM's money to be allocated to give us a relief. So why wasn't the allocation put there from the beginning of time? And I think when we asked that question before, you said it was placed into a different subcategory. Under the tax laws that, that gave you permission to have access to it to go to the, uh, general fund. Is that because you, you saw it as like the backup for the general fund and, and we're not there at this point? So now you can allocate it to the MGM, the MGM money as actual tax funds?
So, uh, kind of an easy way to answer the question is. Uh, we have three, three essentials, essentially three payments from MGM. We have a seventeen point six million. Um, host community payment that they pay, quote unquote, in lieu of taxes. Uh, because we didn't want to be tied up in appellate tax court stuff every year by assessing their value. So that gave us a guaranteed revenue source that just goes into the general fund to help pay for the entire budget. And then there's two and a half million that we get directly for mitigation, which goes towards public safety, public health, those things that. Um, help offset the cost of mitig- or mitigate the cost of hosting a communal casino. And then the other fund that we're talking about is the two and a half million, um, community investment grant or community grant. Uh, pockets two and a half million a year. And that's the one that's been growing since, uh, MGM opened. And we were intentionally doing that so we could grow the revenue to have money to do some meaningful, uh, investments per the host community agreement. Um, we were not aware that we cannot spend it because we were just under the, under the, um. Assumption, for lack of a better term, that we can spend it because we have a, an actual, you know, contract with MGM for forty years. Uh, but eh, when DOR found out that we have it and others have it, they kind of said, oh, we need to have the laws catch up to. Uh, what is actually happening? Because it's not, it's the same for the host community money for marijuana revenue is same for the opioid. Uh, settlement money that's coming in is that they, we want it for a specified purpose. But that specified purpose does not exist in, uh, DOR land, language or specific state law. Does that answer your question?
Well, we don't got a lot, we're over our time, but Diana, you have something to say. And Patrick, can you scroll down under the mayor's recommendation? I, I want to see the other numbers, please. Um.
If I could just make a point, uh, Freddie's question, uh, which was keeping it the same as last year. Um, manager, I think you were thinking about the shift. Uh, if we look to the residential factor of last year. Which ultimately, uh, the council will adopt, the mayor's recommendation is about the same residential factor as we had last year. So in terms of keeping it the same, uh, the mayor's recommendation would keep that residential factor the same. Uh, or.
Yeah, but the, the, the differences. Excuse me real quick. It's just, uh, what Tracy had, madam, you know, Madam Counselor Tracy had brought up is. The tax bill that averaged was gonna go up, uh, two hundred and sixteen dollars. Where you guys mentioned, um, in the mayor's plan was a hundred and ninety-four dollars, I believe it was. And, um, so why is there such a big difference in, in, from the mayors if we kept it around the same residential factor of last year?
Uh, the, the, the residential factor, which is in the first column, uh, on this spreadsheet. That's about, at mayor's recommendation, it's about what it was last year.
Yeah, I think he was talking about the CIP shift though, the one six, one point six four four four. That's what he said. We, he wasn't, he didn't ask him about the factor. He asked about the shift. So I was just explaining.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I understood it from the residential factor because I'm just thinking about it from the homeowner's point of view. It, you know, the business owner's point of view. So the residential factor, if, if the residential factor stayed good, even though it, it was a up market. But nationally for the last nine months, it's been on a slight decline. So it's not like, you know, so they, a lot of people bought in the last, let's say, six, seven, eight months ago. And they probably overpaid by a little bit because the market's starting to stabilize. So, you know, I'm, I'm agreeing with, um. I, I think the, the mayor's recommendation is reasonable, um, just because it, it provides the savings that we need. Um, but, you know, I'm open to, uh, whatever you recommend as well.
Yeah, and shifting more toward the commercial, uh, was one of the tools the mayor had to, to balance the, the increase here. Um, but I would just caution this body going too far, uh, makes for a balloon payment in the next year. Um.
So how would that make for a balloon payment if, if Freddie just said values are going down? So Freddie, also keep it in mind, we're going by FY twenty-one values, not twenty-two. So people who bought in the last nine months aren't even included.
Right, that's. Right, so they're not gonna actually get the value out of it. Because when they get that, um, decrease, they're gonna be paying, um, a little bit more than what their home is actually worth. Based on current trends.
Right, so that's, um, good for the new people. I'm talking about the. Residents who worked their whole life and now even with a hundred and ninety-four dollar increase. For on average, that, that's not really talking about those who like Counselor Hurst was talking about. Are gonna get those five hundred dollar bill increases based on where they live in the city of Springfield. So this is just like one scenario, but not the whole picture. And when we talk about free cash, Freddie, that's free cash that we could use for different things. There's sixty-seven million, well, it's not certified, estimated sixty-seven million. Estimated free cash that we can do more than ten, ten million dollars of, um, relief. We just can't. And if, and if MGM, if it changes tomorrow, we could use some of that. So there's more that we could do. Like I said, even if we took the forty million, broke it down by three years and we committed that forty million for the next three years. It's still thirteen million dollars of relief and we still have twenty-seven million dollars of free cash available to do other stuff with. So, you know, we gotta think about all the factors and, and it is difficult when you're not sitting at all the meetings or if you're not in. When you see a six point five million going toward, um, companies, right? To help them build, to make money, but the folks that's living in the city don't have a, maybe not, don't have another option. To, um, make more money at this point in their lives and their career, then that's questionable to me. And Diana. Okay, Freddie, I'm gonna let you complete your thought.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I just, I, I think, um, it is just a bigger picture to all of it. I just commend you all for your work and input on it. Just think there's just a huge, big picture. Thank you.
Sometimes we just got to think about the little people. You know, we just got to put more thought into the little people, you know? I'm, I work for them. That's who I work for. So when, when I think about all the people that I've talked to in the community. That's already struggling just to get gas and milk and, and bills going up, can't even get housing really right now. I, I can't think about saving fifty-seven million to do other stuff if we can give more of a relief to some of those folks. Um, Diana?
I just wanted to clarify, there was a statement that no matter, that under this plan. The taxes for commercial properties would be going down, their bill would be going down. I don't believe that's true. Can I just get some confirmation on that from the folks?
Uh, to, to, to that point, uh, I looked at, uh, all of the commercial industrial improved parcels. So no vacant land, um, parcels with a building. And the average bill measured the same way we do with the residential, the average, uh, bill would go up. Um, it's, it's just a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and the median change in bill is three hundred and thirty-two dollars, uh, for the commercial. So that's on improved commercial industrial real estate.
So tell me, um, Mr. Fontaine, um, wait, am I calling you the right person? So you said it's about a hundred and thirty-seven and the median is three something. Tell me the difference between those numbers.
So the average, uh, it includes the outliers, uh, the highest and the lowest. The median is the number right in the middle. Uh, so fifty percent of the bills, uh, for improved commercial industrial property. Would go up more than three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty percent of them would go somewhere down, uh, to three hundred and thirty-two dollars or lower. Of an increase. So I, and it's, is the best metric when we're looking at, uh, bill increases here.
So when we look at the one ninety-four, is that the median number?
That's the average and that's what this council's used to say. Uh, that's.
I want to know what the median is. What's the median?
I looked at it for non-new growth parcels, so without new construction. Um, and that median bill difference, uh, for single families out of roughly twenty-five thousand homes. Is a hundred and ninety-four dollars. The median's actually the same as the average in this case.
Median average, okay. So about fifty percent will pay more and then fifty percent might pay the same of the one ninety-four or less.
Or less. Uh, and when I looked at neighborhoods with bills going down, uh, again, under the same category, no new growth. Uh, about thirty percent of the single family home bills will decrease.
Thirty percent, so seventy percent is gonna increase.
Seventy percent would see some kind of increase, um, and to Counselor Hurst's point earlier. Uh, about fifteen percent of that would be above the five hundred dollars. So.
Fifteen percent. Wow. Goodbye, wow. That's a lot. Counselor Hurst.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just, uh, Patrick, if you, if you could just send that breakdown by area. Um, and, you know, neighborhood and if you can get more detailed, that, that would be better. But whatever you have, uh, would be good, just so we can kind of get an idea as to where folks are seeing the significant increases. Um, and where folks are seeing their bills drop. Is that possible?
We can send that along, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, comment, Counselor, because.
Uh, the, I believe it was just been done before, but, um, Patrick, if you could send us. Uh, how much, uh, free cash transfer this body has made within the last year? Um, I will appreciate that. How much, I know we made a six million dollar transfer, I believe, to a project. Housing project, uh, and we have made several free cash transfers. And I want to know how much we have spent out of free cash in the last year on the current fiscal year, rather.
Come up twenty twenty-two, Counselor?
Correct, yeah.
Or what are we in right now?
Oh, we, um, actually, we're in twenty twenty-three, right?
Our fiscal twenty twenty-three.
And, um, you know, I would, I would, uh, something that I would take into consideration before I vote on this. Um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Allen, you will have the final word. Maybe. You're muted.
Sorry, I just got in my car to come downtown. Um, yeah, I just want to know, uh, when we need to submit a free cash number. I, I, you know, obviously, it seems like this conversation is gonna continue till Wednesday. Um, and, and that meeting hopefully comes to a conclusion on it. But just, uh, for Pat and or TJ, et cetera. Well, you know, Patrick went through the, the schedule before, and what had to be done by next Tuesday, December sixth, what had to be submitted, et cetera. Could you just do the same thing for free cash? What is your intention is to, uh, you know, in terms of the, the date that you want to file the free cash number?
Tonight? Well, so I knew we were trying to fly out tonight and first thing tomorrow to have it, uh, approved for Wednesday's vote, or Thursday's vote.
You would like to be able to say tonight that there's sixty seven million in free cash? So, I, I don't, I don't understand what you mean.
I want it certified by DOR and public director and be out there in the public before we set the tax rate Wednesday or Thursday night.
Okay, sir. It has to be, okay. That's what I was wondering, okay. Thank you, uh, thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, so, um, in the interest of time, we do have to conclude the meeting.
This would be our last subcommittee meeting, I don't know if there would be a motion that would be entertained by anyone. For a recommended tax factor from the committee?
Um, anyone on the committee can recommend the tax factor, whether you agree with the mayor or.
This is Freddie, Freddie, I'd like to make a motion to, um, move forward with the mayor's recommendation. Because I think that just, I'm, I'm just literally from a tax committee point of view. I think the other ones are too high level to handle at this point, we're trying to get them to give another ten mil or this or that. I think that, um, it's, it's, it's just a bigger conversation that, you know, a lot of the people in this room probably, you know, want to lead in a, in a different place. But I'm also with, um, I'm like keeping the rec- his recommended tax factor. Um, but I'm also with, if you want to request additional money, I don't, you know, I, I'm not, you know, that's it. But as far as the rate, keeping the rate the same that he recommended.
Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ruth, are you second?
Who are you considering that could devote?
Who's second, I'm sorry, who's just second, um, the fully members are the finance committee, which is you, Tim, and then the folks on the committee. Me, you, the folks on the committee. So I don't know who's second.
I, I'll, I'll second it, this is Patrick.
You can second?
I think so, as a, as the chair of the board.
Oh, I didn't know that, I never heard anyone from, um, the assessors office. That I can remember, it is, if it's the law, it's the law, you can second.
Tracy, uh, if I could, in the past, the five members of the tax committee, like Patrick's on that. In the past, we've, the people on that tax committee, e- even the non-city council members, they get to vote.
Yeah, no, I, I just didn't re- remember if the, um, chair of the assessors, um, was able.
It's not, it's not, it's not an official vote, it's just a recommendation. So basically, we can, we can just say three of us said yes to this, two of us said do this, but it's not like an official, if we, if we don't agree, that's how we.
This one until the city council. Yeah, we could say the tax committee voted three to two to recommend it. Because I'm not, I'm not voting for that, so, um.
You, you have, if you have another recommendation?
Well, it's because this screen moves rapidly and I, and I didn't study it ahead of time, but I will have a recommendation on the day of the, um. Of the, um, special meeting.
Okay.
I don't look at it more. But I'm gonna say no, I don't agree with the mayor's recommendation, so you got you, Freddie and Patrick. So Ms. Ruth Ann, how are you voting with the mayor's recommendation?
Well, I have a question, can that be amended also to say that if the free cash is certified? That we can use ten million dollars of it?
I don't think so, the air has to make that decision, that's not even a decision we can make. He has to say, instead of putting six point five million, go ahead and put ten million to reduce the, um, tax bill even more. But we can't, we can't, that's.
Okay, then I should wait this point.
I think that last year after this point, I think if I'm not mistaken, um, he gave after Tracy had made an ask, he gave. Um, some additional money, I think it was like two million, if I'm not mistaken.
He gave two point five million at first and then he gave another million.
Right, so, so, so he will, he will hear our recommendation that we set the tax, tax. We, if we get to the recommended tax factor and then, um, you know, if Tracy puts in an ask, you know, for additional funds, we can, we can add that. But I think overall, we, we have to set the text, the tax factor. So that's why I'm just saying that it's just such a big picture that how they came to their conclusion makes sense to me. So that's why I'm going with, um, the mayor's recommendation.
The mayor's recommendation, I am not, Ms. Ruth Ann, what was your vote?
No.
Or not, and then Diana?
Yes.
Yeah, so when we go to the, um, special meeting, they're gonna say that the subcommittee voted three to two. And we're gonna say three to two, um, voted in favor of the mayor's recommendation. And so that's what we're gonna present. But even at the, um, city council, any city councillor can, um, you know, present a different tax factor. Not just, um, me or anyone on the committee, any city councillor can look through this and, um, propose a different tax factor. So I just want that to be clear because I know, Ms. Ruth Ann, you're newer, Diana, you got more experience. Um, so with the voting, um. You're putting the mayor's recommendation forward at the special meeting. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, have a great, I'll see you guys in a little bit.
See you in a little while.